Good evening, I'd like to call this May 22, 2023, meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to Order. Welcome to everyone, thank you for joining us on this beautiful evening. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Board members, do I have a motion?
I so moved that we approved the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McQuoakken, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise, remove your headgear, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is recognition and presentations. We're going to begin with school recognitions, the Brittany Lamb and Kelly Cogsdale Character Counts, Students of the Month, Sharon Martz. Are you...
Good evening, Chair of the Board, Ms. Lohr, Members of the Board, and Dr. Scheichel, I'm very honored to recognize tonight two Cub Run students for the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Cogsdale Character Counts Award. So, Yuretsi Olgan, would you join me? Here we go. So this is what we have to say about you tonight. Yuretsi is a very special young lady. In the classroom, she shows tremendous leadership skills, and she is always more than willing to help others without being asked. She always shows 100% in all of her academic work, and while Yuretsi stands out to the staff at Cub Run Elementary, she has also made quite an impression on her peers as well. She is trustworthy, responsible, and always sets a good example for others. Yuretsi is a very kind friend to her peers and strives to make everyone feel loved and important. I've seen Yuretsi stand out as a role model, mentoring younger students without being asked, and she has also shown great leadership skills by always lending a helping hand to the classroom teachers. Outside of school, Yuretsi helps her mom with her siblings and ensures that she is being the very best role model she can be. Yuretsi is very much deserving of the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Cogsdale Award for her character and integrity inside and outside of school. Congratulations.
And the family as well? All right, so here's what we have to say about Luke. Luke stands out for his mature character. He has an incredible work ethic, striving to do well, and everything he puts his mind to. Luke has a passion and a zest for learning as his curiosity leads to intriguing questions and interesting discussions in class. Creativity thrives within Luke. He has a quick and thorough imagination that powers his unique and colorful ideas, and he is extremely thoughtful and respectful of all individuals at Cub Run, students, teachers, and other staff. Luke is known not only for his knowledge of content, but also the way he treats others. He helps other students when they may not understand directions or concepts, and he is extremely conscientious of how others may be feeling. Luke's passion and maturity make him especially deserving of this Character Council Award. Congratulations, Luke. Our next presenter will be John Mongold from Peakview Elementary School.
Rockingham County School Board members, Dr. Scheichel, honored guests, it is my great privilege this evening to recognize the two Cogsdale-Lamb Character Council Awards winners for Peakview Elementary School in Rockingham County. I would ask at this time that Raleigh Bennett come down and join me, please? Mr. Kirk, Raleigh's teacher writes that Raleigh is kind to all students and tries to include everyone in activities throughout the day. He is responsible with his own materials, which then allows him to help others that are in need. I can put him with any student and trust that he will always be encouraging and lead through example. Plus, he may look somewhat familiar to you. He was in the daily news record recently as placing third in the region in the Virginia School Board Association's art contest. Please give Raleigh a round of applause. please, with her family. Elena's teacher, Ms. Wangaro, writes, "When asked to think of who to nominate for the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Cogsdale Character Counts Student of the Month Award for Peakview Elementary School, the first name that came to her mind was Elena. Elena is driven, diligent, and hardworking. She is a straight A student, she always puts forth her best effort in all that she does, not just with her schoolwork, but in extracurricular activities as well. She participated in the Peakview Hippity Hoppers and has had a role in the school musical The Jungle Book. Elena also won Peakview's 5th grade spelling bee and represented the school in the county spelling bee. She is fluent in two languages, both English and Russian, and uses these skills to help others frequently. She exemplifies all Character Counts pillars on a daily basis and encourages others to do the same. It has been an honor to be her teacher this year," and I would like to echo those sentiments and say congratulations.
If you've attended a school board meeting before, you may have noticed that we are doing things a little bit differently tonight with our character counts. Typically, we do the students at the school that they attend, but since we kind of changed our schedule up this year, and this is our second time at Spotswood High School, and we haven't been able to get to any elementary schools, we're doing elementary schools tonight, and Spotswood was kind enough to yield their time to their feeder schools. We also have Character Counts representatives from our other elementary schools, and I'm going to read those names, and if you are here, please stand. From Elkton Elementary, we have Amel... Oh, I'm going to mess up these names, guys, I am sorry. Amel... Amel Etzy? Amel Etzy Lyons, are you here? Great, she'll never know. Grayson Stroop from Elkton. From Folks Run, we have Alicia Dean and Caleb Falk. From John C. Myers, we have Isabel Driver and Jackson Hull. From John Whalen Elementary, we have Reagan Wetzel and Elijah Hernandez. From Lacy Spring, we have Sophia Steinbach and Blake Weimer. Hey, you guys are here! From Linville Edom, we have Jasmine Correa and Julian Orzorio. From Magackisville, we have Valerie Becerra Osorio and Dario Hurstoff. From Mountain View Elementary, Eliza Kilmick and Jesmar Ledensma. From Autobahn, we have Haley... Haiti Cromer and Jessie Fusco. From Plains, we have Genesis Ortiz-Vargas and Bailey Hart. From Pleasant Valley, Addie Roberts and Jackson Smith. Is it Addie Roberts?
Addie.
Addie, I got it right, oh good. From Riverbend, we have Maira Alejandra Alessia and Kayden Marks. And from South River, we have Emily Stauffer and Kayden Powell. Let's congratulate all of our Character Counts recipients. And our Character Counts member students that we just read out tonight, you all will be receiving, just like Mr. Cross gave our in-person ones tonight, you will all be receiving a pin to wear close to your heart, a plaque or a certificate for parents to hang on your walls, and a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. So, and just, let's also give all the parents that raised these exceptional children a round of applause as well. We will, we're kind of doing the same thing with Inspire Awards. We have a few that are with us tonight, and then we'll have a slideshow of all the individuals receiving Inspire Awards this evening, because this is the last school board meeting of the school year. We're going to begin with Donna Hoskins' parent presenting to Kim Phillips, a 2nd grade teacher at Magackisville Elementary School.
Focusing on the development of socio-emotional skills of each student is what Ms. Phillips always strives to do. It is obvious to anyone that walks into Mrs. Phillips' classroom. Mrs. Phillips is an inspirational teacher for her students. She strives to develop not only cognitive skills, but also good character in each of her 2nd graders. She sets high expectations for each child and works to strengthen their socio-emotional skills at whatever level they are. Her influence on each child will be an asset to them throughout their life. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Phillips, for your dedication to our students. Next, we'll have Bailey Miller, a student, presenting to Cecile Deason. She's the theater teacher at Turner Ashby High School.
Ms. Deason, our theater teacher, offers extracurricular theatrical opportunities year-round, meaning she's often required to stay much later than other teachers. These projects have often been very successful, and many even go on to win awards. One of the most unique things about our theater program at T.A. is the plethora of opportunities, that we are not only limited to acting, but we're also encouraged to pursue technical roles. While other students, or other schools nearby, offer some similar things, Ms. Deason goes above and beyond. She consistently has created students who excel in all theatrical areas. She has inspired students to pursue acting, singing, dancing, and tech in and out of school. Shows produced at Turner Ashby often have students in charge of technical aspects, and many local schools around here are not able to say the same. She allows us to learn from our mistakes while still being there to support us and help whenever we need it. She cares about each student and provides them with an exceptional education. Each year, she goes above and beyond, even throughout COVID-19, she continues to always provide us with top-tier education. I cannot emphasize enough how much each student here appreciates her and all that she does. She truly is a once-in-a-lifetime teacher.
Well said, Bailey, and thank you, Ms. Deason, for your support of our students. Next, we'll have Rhonda Bible, parent, presenting to Sarah Moyers, a bus driver at Lacy Springs
Miss Sarah, as we call her, goes above and beyond her job as bus driver. Not only is she the most awesome bus driver, but she also helps in the classroom when teachers are away. Many times, my daughter has come home and said, "Miss Sarah was my teacher today." She is always transporting students for field trips, sporting practice, and games. Miss Sarah has a genuine love for all the students at Lacy Springs in Rockingham County. She is most definitely an asset to our schools.
Thank you all very much. I'm now going to read the names of our other Inspire Award nominees for the year, and it's, I just want to note that all of these nominees will be receiving a Riffey gift card. Corey Mayhew, nominated by Greta Liski, and if you're here, please stand. Brent Eastep, nominated by Michaela Metz. Melinda Armentraut, nominated by Jenny Brown. Nathan Yates, nominated by Tristan Arenas. Beth Dossev, nominated by Sawyer Lim and Rachel Benison. Chris Eby, nominated by Claire Lieper. Jessica Everett, nominated by Amy Allerman. Katie Long, nominated by Laura Flick. Kim Mizell, nominated by Nicole Meredith and Pam Willberger. Tristan Brady, nominated by Christina Dean. Sarah Schull, nominated by Catherine White. Jennifer Hawke, nominated by Kimberly Hill. Laura Simmons, nominated by Laura Riggelman. Dawn Flora, nominated by Jennifer Harper. Lauren Pergerson, nominated by Samantha Grog. Amanda Nesselrod, nominated by Finn Whistleman. John Gingrich, nominated by Orin Whistleman. Greg Conaway, nominated by Tiffany Funkhauser. Chris Snead, nominated by Joshua Ray Martinez and Evan Lilly. Casey Miller, nominated by Riley Harper. Missy Hipps, nominated by Kerry Florrie. Rob Nash, nominated by Dawn and Kathy Rhodes and Rob Whitney. Tim Mumber, nominated by Aiden Morgan. Tracy Michael, nominated by Lizzie Strafford. And Kevin Turner, nominated by Ellie Simmers. Let's give all of our Inspire nominees a hand. And I'd like to once again thank all of our nominees and all of our nominators for supporting our Inspire Awards, and for all of our staff who supports our students every single day. Thank you all. We're now going to move on to Tammy Stone, who has some interesting results for us.
Thank you, Chairman Lohr, school board members, Dr. Scheichel, and attendees. I'm excited to ask our Hilliard solar teams to please come up and join us up here, so that they're closer here. While they're coming up, I want to tell you about, they did, completed a large project-based learning project, and they did it during advisory time. And if you're not familiar with the middle school schedule, advisory time is like 25 to 30 minutes that happens every day. These students were given the opportunity, and they volunteered to do this project. They have worked on it throughout the entire year. They have presented to different teachers, they have done so many things. And so I want to, first of all, recognize their teacher, Tracy Rhodes, who was recognized at the state Solar and Wind Competition for being the state Middle School Coach of the Year. This is her award. And there's two people that were also very helpful for her and essential, especially there was an event she couldn't be at, so this person stepped in, and those two people are Kaissa Sarvar and Obi Hastetter. Obi is an ITRT, and Kaissa's a science teacher at Hilliard. So now I'm going to hand it over to Tracy Rhodes, Ms. Rhodes. She's going to explain the, some of the awards, and have some of the kids talk about a couple of things, so I'm going to pass it over to you guys.
Thank you for having us this evening. Again, my name is Tracy Rhodes, and I am the challenged teacher at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School. So this year, I have worked with these amazing students, plus a few more that could not be here this evening, on creating a solar project. The solar challenge is organized by an organization called KidWinn, which started in 2003. Students are asked to create a small-scale solar project. Students need to be able to show renewable energy knowledge by taking a quiz, participate in instant solar challenges, and present to judges how they constructed their project and explain their circuitry and how solar is beneficial as an energy source relevant to their projects. These students had a very successful year with their projects. They competed at the regional, state, and even the national levels. These teams have been awarded the judges' award for Big Inspiration at Regionals, and the judges', and recognition as an all-girls team. The judges' award for Best Circuitry at Regionals. Third place in the regional, that's okay, we have a couple more. Third place at the regional competition. This team also received 3rd place at the state competition. And most recent award, this past week, this team got 1st place at Nationals. Even though our teams were very successful this year, there were plenty of challenges to get to this point, and those challenges became learning experiences, and they're going to share some of those with you.
Hello, our name is Team Light in the Dark. One of our challenges with the Light Keeper's House, we had a parallel circuit connecting three lights. One of those lights would always go out whenever we moved it, so we had to try a series of positions to get the sweet spot to make it, to make all of them light up.
Hello, we are Team Trainwreck. And one of the greatest challenges that we faced for our Wild Western-themed train run on solar energy was definitely the perfect turn whenever our train turned into our train station called the South Station. If you saw our project up outside of the auditorium, you may have noticed multiple lines connecting, going into the South Station of our train station. This is because there were so many flaws with our original design whenever creating our train track that would go into the station. We did it on a very, very small time crunch, right before the competition. We worked tirelessly to make sure that the track wouldn't make it, the train turn too wide or too short, and it truly was a train wreck. Right before the competition, we had a bunch of tape, made sure that it would connect perfectly and allow it to go through, and so far, I'd say that it works pretty well.
Hi, we're Team Solar Baby. We built a solar-powered hotel, because who doesn't want to stay in a hotel? I mean, definitely one of our biggest challenges was the elevator. Our elevator was way too heavy at the beginning, because we didn't have any gear reduction or geared up to make it pull up, so we ended up going with a Kynect motor. We ended up trying counterweights, we tried pretty much everything, tried to gear it up on our own, but we just went with gearing it up with a Kynect motor. And now our elevator is way too light, so it won't click the bottom relay switch, so we have to add more weight to it, which I think is pretty funny.
Hi, we're Team Wheel of Doom, and one of the many challenges that we faced was that we needed enough solar energy to power our Ferris wheel. So our solution was to add two wind connects that, add two wind connects that are powered by two solar panels that are parallel circuits. Also, we shrunk down our Ferris wheel so it could be both lighter and easier to spin. so it could be both lighter and easier to spin.
Hi, we are Team Flying Pigeon. We had built a farm setting and one of our biggest challenges was our motor that spun our little windmill, the wires kept falling off. So it was right at the last time we had presented, our last presentation, that both of the wires fell off. So we were kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. So we found some alligator clips and clipped everything together. And so far, it's working.
We also have a short video we'd like to share with you.
My name is Yasmin.
And I'm Cora. And we are the Team Wheel of Doom. And what we built was a Ferris wheel out of Kynex.
While building the Ferris wheel, we learned how to work together as a team and how to hook up the solar panels together.
It was a lot of fun working with each other and coming after school to work on the project. It was also fun to see how the Ferris wheel worked.
Did you know that the first solar-powered Ferris wheel was made in 1998 and had a 50 killer watt solar system that provided enough energy during the day, but during the night, the energy came from the grid?
Hello, my name is Rae. I'm Joey.
I'm Dana.
I'm Anthony.
And we are Team Flying Pigeons. And this is our project.
What we learned is there are many ways circuits can malfunction.
What was fun was.
Working as a team to solve problems.
Solar fact, did you know that the White House has solar panels?
I'm Caroline.
And I'm Brayla.
Our team name is Light in the Dark. And we made a lighthouse.
We learned how to use a Q-Bot and connect it to our lighthouse.
One thing that was fun was going to go to the regionals competition and seeing what the other teams made.
One cool solar fact is that 173,000 terawatts of solar energy strikes the earth continuously.
Hi, I'm Max.
Hey, I'm Gavin.
I'm Colton.
And my name's Noah.
And we are Trainwreck.
We'll be presenting our Midwestern-themed solar-powered train.
So we built a train. Now, this train is on top of a Q-Bot car. Now, if you don't know what a Q-Bot car is, it is powered by a battery. Now, with solar, we had to figure out a way to implement a solar-powered battery. So we took a lithium battery, which can charge by solar, and then you can attach it to the Q-Bot car. And the attachment goes onto a micro:bit, which codes the car. We cut it to follow a black line, which is our train track. A business we built was a general store. It has a micro:bit, which displays its name and plays some music along with lights on the side.
While doing this project, we learned how to implement solar energy into our daily lives. And we learned how to further expand our career choices in the future.
It was so much fun being able to work through the challenges of creating our houses, lights, and train. It was such a fun and great opportunity to learn the benefits of solar energy for our team.
One fun fact about solar energy is that it's the fastest-growing renewable resource. It will soon become the number-one renewable resource.
I'm Caleb.
I'm Noah.
And I'm Connor.
And we're Team Solar Baby.
What was fun was learning about renewable resources, especially solar. What we learned is, we learned how to make a parallel circuit, how to use solar, and how to involve solar in our daily lives.
Did you know if you put solar panels around the sun, after an hour, you could power the whole world for years?
Do you have any questions for us? I just, you can go sit, it's fine. I just want to say congratulations, that is amazing. I actually have spent a couple of days this week, well, this weekend, last week, at J. Frank, working with students. I was working with four students. And like keeping middle schoolers on task for, and trying to get all the work done in 25 minutes? That's impressive that you guys got that much done. So let's give the teachers a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations and thank you all. Okay, next on the agenda,
Good evening Chairman Lor, board members, and Dr. Scheichel. I'm Leo Johnson, a member of the Rockingham County Public Schools Student Advisory Committee. And I'm here along with fellow members of the committee to speak to you all this evening. I'd like to start by reminding you of our presentation on February 13th of this year, which took place at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School. That night, we discussed our work as a county in our English 11 classes this school year with the Safe and Caring Schools Project, during which we worked together to address needs that we, as students, feel we have that prevent us from being able to reach our full potential throughout the school day. To form the basis of our needs, we looked to the psychological principle of Maslow's hierarchy, which is split into numerous levels according to needs people must attain in order to reach the self-actualization level, which is at the highest level of the hierarchy. What we all realized throughout this process in terms of the concept of self-actualization is a need to have a seat at the decision-making table for policies being made for students within our county.
Good evening, I'm Gillian Harlow. The RCPS Student Advisory Committee was formed that evening with both superintendent and school board support and has met for further dialogue with the community, explaining both the mission and purpose of the Student Advisory Committee. We feel that the formation of this committee will enable students to have representation when decisions are made that involve our educational needs. Currently, currently this committee is at very different points of development within each school. Spotswood has formed a committee of nine and held various meetings since February 13th. Whereas Broadway is still in the very early developmental stages, along with East Rock and Turner Ashby.
You may be wondering, what has the Student Advisory Committee done since that school board meeting? To answer this question, I am grateful to have our committee inform you tonight of all of the progress that has been made within our committee in the past several months.
Good evening, I'm Joseline Alvarez. Since our presentation on February 13th, we have received lots of coverage on various news outlets, including WHSV, WMRA, and DNR. On the night of the board meeting at which we presented, WHSV was there and covered our story on the news. Additionally, and perhaps just as exciting, that WHSV story was included on the Virginia School Board Association's website on February 13th. Additionally, on March 14th, Randy Hagie from WMRA featured our story in a five-minute segment that included interviews from five of our county students and also connected our work to the larger Community Dialogue Initiative.
Good evening, my name's Helena Ageron. Finally, on March 29th of this year, The Education That Counts insert was published in the DNR. This insert featured 16 of Rockingham County high school student voices, including needs we have as well as solutions, in addition to what we've learned throughout this process. What we didn't know about this whole experience when we started our work in early September was that not only would our voices be heard by administrators in our school system, but that we would receive support from our community as well.
Good evening, I'm Clement Haddad and I will be speaking about the experience that the community dialogue process and meeting with Superintendent Dr. Scheichel has proved to be for our committee. On March 23rd, we were able to be a part of the Community Dialogue Initiative, the original momentum and final conclusion to our whole involvement in the safe and caring schools process. I am honored that I and other members were able to contribute to the Community Dialogue Initiative. And it has verified itself to be a very powerful experience when members of the tables were able to share how they felt about important but emotional topics and still bring their ideas and opinions to the discussion while respecting the other community members in said dialogue. On May 5th, we were also able to meet with Dr. Scheichel as a Student Advisory Committee. Our student voices being recognized to that magnitude means a lot to the future of our committee. Our first meeting was breaking ground for the future of the committee. And in my observations, there were disagreements. But as a group, we were able to decide on a future and in a respectful manner where all of our individual voices were being heard and documented.
When we met with Dr. Scheichel on May 5th, we discussed how the Student Advisory Committee will run next year. Collectively, we decided that each school will have their own selection process and meeting times varying depending on their schedules. During this discussion, we concluded that while each high school's committee will meet as needed, representatives from the four schools will come together quarterly to meet with each other and also with the superintendent to discuss issues or concerns observed within our schools. As well as meeting with each other and the superintendent, the Student Advisory Committee will present to the school board quarterly as well. This seems like the best way for everyone to collaborate and unite to solve concerns within our schools.
In addition to the work we'll be doing as a countywide committee, I am also excited to announce that the Interactivity Foundation is partnering with Spotswood High School. Our school will be a pilot for the nationwide process of training students to be peer facilitators of community dialogue. Through this partnership, a group of 20 rising seniors at Spotswood will be trained to facilitate community discussion in the same fashion as was done through Eastern Mennonite University's public dialogue process through RCPS schools. Being trained as peer facilitators, students will learn how to respectfully facilitate discussions relating to the needs of students with other students in our school system and community members. This is an outstanding opportunity for our students at Spotswood as it not only gives them the opportunity to learn lifelong skills and human relations, but also gives them the chance to set an example for other students across the county. The hope is that we will be able to extend the partnership to all RCPS high schools after next year. Another exciting opportunity we've been given is an invitation to present at VDOE's Safe and Supportive Schools Conferences this summer, the first of which will be held in Blacksburg at the end of June, and the second of which will be held in Newport News at the end of July. None of this recognition of the opportunities we've been given would be possible without our supportive leader, Dr. Oscar Scheichel.
Before we close out our presentation for the night, I would like to step in and say a thank you to Dr. Oscar Scheichel. Not only did you help me find my voice, but you also helped many other students and teachers find theirs. You gave each of us the opportunity to step in and help one another during times when we felt unheard. We started making changes because you showed us that people would listen. You helped prove to us that change is possible. Here are just some of the many things people have said about you. Through my discussions with you at the numerous field trips you've attended for our project this year, I've found that every time you were very attentive to my ideas, which personally made me feel like my ideas mattered in the eyes of my superintendent, Leo Johnson. You allowed us to express our thoughts without feeling disvalued. Isabella Strawbridge. This year, I loved working alongside you and it meant so much to me that I was able to voice my concerns with your support. I have been incredibly inspired by the sense of community that this project has brought me. Not only that, I have enjoyed connecting with my peers and teachers on a level that I have never had before. Jen Harlow. This year was made possible by you. And thanks to you, we've been able to accomplish so much. From all the students in the county, we thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the students and dedication to our community. Being a superintendent is a lot of work, so we hope your retirement is more relaxing and less taxing than these past several years have been.
Thank you all for that presentation, that was wonderful. And I'm looking forward to hearing from you guys in the future. We are now going to move on to our public comments portion of our meeting. And our first speaker tonight is Zach Nicholson. Oh, while Mr. Nicholson approaches the podium, I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that public comments are limited to three minutes. There'll be a timer that will sound at 30 seconds to go. We expect that, we expect you to follow the rules and that comments must be directed towards the hall and follow the pillars of character counts. Mr. Nicholson, is that you?
Good evening, board members, Dr. Scheichel. I'm Zach Nicholson. I'm here today to discuss the Cody Kepner novel, The Duff. This book has been a concern of mine and was also brought to my attention by a parent. I have read this book twice, actually, because critics have said, "I'm not concerning books as a whole by only focusing on content." However, I think the same can be said when content is severely overlooked, as well as overlooking the audience that it serves. To my knowledge, a GoFile search will show this book at most of the high schools and none of the middle schools. When I was discussing this book with other parents, one parent said, "This book is at Elkton Middle." I asked if they were sure of this. The parent then sent me a screenshot of their child's checkout history and sure enough, it shows the book checked out March 1st by their child. This book mentions the A-word 25 times, the S-word 33 times, the D-word 30 times, the B-word 22 times. Hell is mentioned 21 times. When you're really mad at someone, the P-word is mentioned 17 times. The F-word is mentioned a whopping 45 times. That's a total of 193 curse words in 277 pages. What that means is, if you're flipping through this book, you have a 70% chance of landing on a page that contains one or more of those words. There's also other honorable mentions here. Oral sex is mentioned three times. A vivid account of that is on page 167. The main characters in this book use sex to escape from their problems. Allowing this book in the middle schools is normalizing and desensitizing this language and sexual behavior at a very young age. What's interesting here is the School Librarian Journal says this book is recommended for 10th grade and up. It also says that there's a few F-words in this. Forty-five is not a few. So someone in RCPS thought it was a great idea to lower that recommendation down to middle school children for checkout. Perhaps they would like to explain why. Our process for books is clearly very broken. Critics of mine keep saying we need diverse books. Well, Webster defines diverse as a condition of having different elements, the inclusion of people of different races and cultures. Nowhere does it say that diverse means strong sexual content and extreme profanity. I'll give it to you, these books are different. But if we have to, if a book has to distinguish itself this way, I question the talent of the authors and the standards here at RCPS. Dr. Scheichel, I appreciate our recent conversations on this matter, perhaps moving to content descriptions placed on book covers. I think RCPS has dropped the ball by not informing parents that they can file a request that can be entered into a database that certain books and content cannot be accessed by their child if they so desire. This is not listed anywhere on RCPS webpage. When we discussed other novels last year, this was never mentioned. I would like this request to be perhaps placed into school policy, amend it, or whatever. Sure, I can go down to the library and tell the librarians that I don't want my child to check out this stuff. But they don't have to honor it, it's not policy. I'm asking you guys nicely, for the last time, please fix this. My son starts Elkton Middle School this fall.
Sorry, I hope y'all don't mind, but I don't like really standing still. So if I walk around a little bit, is that all right with y'all? Okay, cool. My name's Matthew Alexander. I'm a social studies teacher at Elkton Middle School. And what I want to talk to you guys about today is something called social-emotional learning. It's something that I've heard that's been demonized a lot by a lot of folks who are kind of conspiracy theorists and think it's the same kind of three-letter word as in like CRT and making it out to be a boogie- like CRT and making it out to be a boogeyman that it's actually not. So just to make sure that people understand exactly what SEL is and what it is not, I want to make sure to go over a few of these things today. One of the things that it is, it's making sure that students can make good decisions in a classroom, students can make good decisions in a hallway, students can make good decisions anywhere in the building and when they're outside of the building. So, printed off a little article that I gave to the, I gave it to a little article, so... Okay. So, some of the things that social emotional learning is, as it says here, and I gave this to some of the school board members, SEL promotes young people's academic success, health, and well-being at the same time that it prevents a variety of problems such as alcohol, drug use, violence, truancy, and bullying. A large body of scientific research has determined that the effective SEL in schools is significantly improving students' social emotional skills, attitudes with self and others, social interactions. SEL prepares young people for success in adulthood. SEL helps students become good communicators, cooperative members of a team, effective leaders, and caring and concerned members of the community. It teaches them how to set and achieve goals and how to persist in the face of challenges. These are precisely skills that today's employers are considering important for the workforce of the future. So when I hear a lot of folks talking a negative way about SEL-
Mr. Alexander, please address the board.
Okay, thank you. So, when I hear folks talking about SEL and potential school board members saying that SEL is a dirty three-letter word and things of that nature, it's a little bit disingenuous, it's a little bit off-putting for me especially, and I would never vote for someone who would do something like that or speak that way about social emotional learning, because I've seen its efficacy in the classroom. I have students, last year when we went over Mental Health Awareness Month, which is this month, May, and I talked about how, you know, it's okay not to be okay. It's okay to have issues, it's okay to be sad, it's okay to be depressed, it's okay to say that things are hurting you. And in that one class, I had four different students who broke down crying, one because she'd had an uncle that died, she hadn't been able to process that, another who was upset with himself for not standing up for his mother after his mother had been physically assaulted by his dad. We had time after time where these students broke down in class because they had all this trauma that they hadn't dealt with. So what's happening in our schools, ladies and gentlemen, is we have folks who are not okay, and we have folks that need that assistance from whether it's teachers or counselors or administrators, or heck, bus drivers and cafeteria workers. We had all this character count stuff, and those folks really do embody what SEL is all about.
Your time. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Stacy Benner.
Hi. So, I'm going to tell you that my speech is, it's four minutes. Can I ask for permission to go over by a minute by Madam Chair?
We actually have a super full agenda tonight. Can you get it?
One minute. One minute. I have sat here patiently and listened to everything here. One more minute is all I'm asking for. I tried to condense it, I could not condense it. Please.
Can you submit it in writing?
I have talked to several board members, or Dr. Scheichel, I've talked to Dr. Alderfer. I'm using this opportunity to talk to you guys here. It's a minute.
The problem is, when I start making-
We've already wasted a minute.
Yeah, I know. We'll see. Begin, please.
Okay. Good evening, school board members. Dr. Scheichel, my name is Stacy Benner. I'm here to ask the school board to revisit and revise our CPS policy JFCF that was put in place on eleven twenty-eight twenty-two. This policy has been detrimental, has had a detrimental effect on my family for the last couple of months. I feel I need to speak out on behalf of my family and the other families that have been affected by this new policy. For those of you who don't know, policy JFCF was created to punish students who were found with illegal substances on school grounds and related behaviors. It does not make any difference what the circumstances were leading up to these events. These kids are given an immediate suspension, quote, "an immediate suspension in school or out of school for up to ten days. In addition, the student will be placed on poor school standing for ninety days," unquote. Ninety school calendar days of poor school standing includes denying the student admission or participation in any school extracurricular activities. They cannot play football, attend a friend's baseball game at school, go to prom, or even see a school play during the ninety days period. This poor school standing punishment runs into the next school year if it has not been completed during the school year. You heard me correctly. Punishments can run through the summer and into the next school year, effectively turning ninety days into almost two hundred days of punishment. From a school board standpoint, we understand completely that schools want to be tough on these sorts of negative behaviors. It is not easy to be a teacher or a school administrator in these times of such unpredictability. We understand that our policies are designed, quote, "We understand that," quote from Dr. Scheichel, "our policies are designed to keep students safe and often address patterns of conduct that have consumed our administrators' attention, risking distraction to the quality of education we seek to provide our students every day," unquote. What we feel you all didn't understand while approving this policy is that all of your students are still children. They may be big children, but they're still children. They make mistakes. They are learning as they go, just like we all are, even as adults. Children should learn through compassion and empathy, not rigid one-size-fits-all policies that include zero leniency. This current new policy includes neither compassion or empathy. The following are the real-life implications of your policy JFCF. Our son's poor school standing punishment runs from three eight twenty-three to the end of October twenty-twenty-three. He cannot practice, play, or attend any football games for the fall of twenty-twenty-three, including his little brother's Davey football games. So this means he will not be able to play football at all his senior year at Turner Ashby High School. He will not be able to share the myriad of experiences that go along with being on a football team his senior year. He will not get to share the closure of a successful high school football career with football families, some of which we have been with for over a decade. Even though it may not seem like a big deal to some people, this will be a life-changing event for him, forever creating a stigma for his final year of high school. He wants to be a dentist, he wanted to use his talent for football to get a scholarship for college. This punishment profoundly affects all of those things. Through this policy, he has been effectively isolated from all of his school peer group support. In this turbulent present day, our children are constantly struggling with mental health issues. Anxiety, self-doubt, and the pressures of social media are only a few things that all work to create a house of cards that could fall at any minute. The last thing our public school system should be doing is isolating these students from their peer groups, leaving them to struggle without support. As parents, we provide all the support that we can, but we are only one part of a child's social development. Our schools and the community that they provide are also a part of this development. We have all found out how important this was during the pandemic. Our children were kept apart from their peers, and they are all still recovering from it three years later. This policy is also an equitable punishment. It only truly targets and punishes the students who are overachievers. These are the students who are involved in many school activities, they give back to the school as much as possible and are positive members of the school environment. It does nothing to deter the behaviors of the students who just show up and do the bare minimum. When a student doesn't care, no punishment is effective. These are just the few of the many negative effects of this policy and very strong reasons to revisit and revise it. I have researched other local school districts' policies which are comparable to our policy here at Rockingham County. These schools include Virginia Beach City, Roanoke, Bodatot County, and Albemarle Counties. All of these school policies are not nearly as rigid and one-size-fits-all as Rockingham Counties. Some of these include a rehab option instead of full punishment for first-time offenders. Some include just ten-day suspension, and others include a substance abuse program in combination with other less serious punishments. Those other schools show that they understand that we all make mistakes and can learn and grow from those mistakes in a positive way, especially when students are shown compassion. I've heard you all say that you all care about the students here at Rockingham County and only want the best for them. Please think about your own childhood experiences. Every single person here has made mistakes growing up. That is the inevitable part of life. Policies like this one enacted in November only do harm to families and their children who work hard to be a positive influence on the community. I am asking you all to revisit and revise policy JFCF as soon as possible. Thank you.
We'll next hear from Michael Stempel.
So, fittingly, I will, my name is Mike Stempel. I'm from Broadway, Virginia. Board, Dr. Scheichel, thank you. Also be talking about SEL. I have been, or social emotional learning, I have become increasingly concerned about the rhetoric coming from a school board member and candidates for school board in their opposition to social emotional learning, otherwise known as SEL. They have indicated that they are opposed to students learning foundational skills such as self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Why would anyone publicly state that they oppose programs that support students with these skills? If you go to the National Character Counts website, you will find resources that use and encourage social emotional learning initiatives and skills. I wonder if the school board member and candidates for school board oppose our CPS's character counts programs as well. Why is there this opposition to non-political life skills? Likely, this is due to their handlers telling them what to say without any understanding of what they oppose about a particular policy. These talking heads will use buzzwords such as "woke" without having an explanation or understanding of what the word means. I encourage all school board members and school board candidates to think for themselves, learn what words mean, and show that they have a backbone to support initiatives and encourage students with their social and emotional development. If you recall and you listened to the presentation earlier, you would notice that one of the parents mentioned the importance of the social and emotional learning of their child in one of the inspire words. I just would like to highlight that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Paula Lamb.
Good evening. My name is Paula Lamb. I'm a parent of two students in District Five, and I enjoy being involved in their learning experience, and I have chosen to serve our CPS by being the PTSA president and vice president of the boosters here at Spotswood. I also serve on the refi, Board of Directors, and I participated in the Community Dialogue Initiative. I'm running for school board in District Five as a concerned, albeit engaged, parent. My background in policy and compliance, and I wanted to bring this issue to the board as one of several that I will talk about during my campaign so that we can do what is best for our children. As a parent, I have discovered that things aren't as transparent as they need to be, and I want to suggest the board research this issue. During my time on the Community Dialogue Initiative, we talked about how to rebuild trust of the school system in the community. One step in the right direction would be transparency in what our children are being taught. Technology has provided us with the means to have information available at our fingertips, including our children's educational record, which includes their full name. At many board meetings, we have heard that parents can access their children's information anytime, we just need to log in. This, I have found, is not always the case. I tried logging into the library and found out that I must use my child's username and password. There is a process for notification of overdue books, so for transparency's sake, my recommendation would be for parents to receive a notification when their child checks out a book. I've tried logging onto Schoology, and I am able to see a little bit of information, but more often than not, I get an access denied page. I've had kids in our CPS for the past twenty years. I was able to keep track of the older kids' work because it was on paper and in books. Now, most student work is completed and submitted online. With the technology that we have available, we should be able to access our children's work and study materials at any time electronically, but again, that is not always the case. My understanding is that there is a toggle switch that the teachers can set to make the work visible or not to parents. I'd like to request that any instrument of learning, video, website, slideshow, et cetera, and any work assigned and completed be visible to parents and that they always have access to this information. Through this transparency, we will not only have access to our child's record, but we will be able to support our children in their learning. And thus, we can be more involved as cooperative parents with teachers, school administrators, and our students. I'm a concerned and engaged parent that wants to make sure our students have a safe environment for learning, that a transparent partnership with parents, teachers, and students is enabled and can thrive, and that our engaged students give back to the community. That needs to begin with transparency and education. It is apparent that we are being distracted by political hot topics, and the real issue here is the education of our students.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Amber Hamm.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel and attendees. Tonight, I'm here as the Chair of the CSAC Special Education Advisory Committee. As we all know, Dr. Scheichel will be retiring soon, and we want to share our appreciation for his service to Rockingham County Public Schools and CSAC. Often, as parents of special education students, we fear our children are left out because they do not fit the norm. Through CSAC, parents, community members, and educators set aside time to discuss concerns, brainstorm solutions, and share amazing highlights. Dr. Scheichel has valued CSAC and has carved out time to attend meetings and answer questions. He understands and tries to seek opportunities to improve services to meet students' needs. When CSAC members think of Dr. Scheichel, these are some of the phrases and words that come to mind. Hard worker, wisdom, leadership, your care for kids with disabilities, amazing communication with our community, you've always put all of our students first, dedication and commitment to improving our CPS. Your legacy will live on in our students for years. As a symbol of our appreciation, CSAC members have written personal messages in the Dr. Sue's book, Oh, The Places You'll Go. Thank you, Dr. Scheichel, for the time and devotion that you have given to CSAC and for always being there for our kids. We wish you a wonderful retirement, and oh, just imagine the places you'll go.
Thank you, and that concludes our public comments for the evening. We'll now move on to highlights, board members, and we'll start with Mr. Cross.
I think it has been a lot highlighted tonight, and all the awards that we gave out, and all the teachers that received recognition tonight. Thank you, guys, to the public school teachers and the students that have done, and administrators that have done so much for our students this school year. And also tonight, I want to thank SRO Alvarez that's here somewhere, but he's still here until the school board meeting ends. I want to thank him for his service here at Spotswood High School, and I always hear great things about SRO Alvarez and the impact that he's having upon the students here at Spotswood High School. So, thank you, Mr. Alvarez, for all that you do. And Mr. Danzy, thank you as well, and your staff for everything you do here at Spotswood High School.
Thank you. Mr. Breeden.
Thank you. The auditorium's a little dark to the back, but I think I see my good friend Ladonna Shiflett back there, brightened my day to see you walk in, and it's good to see you again. As I've been sort of wrapping up my boardsmanship, I've been trying to give a shout-out to some folks who have been helpful to me, and it's appropriate here tonight at Spotswood that I give a shout-out to Mr. Danzy, who was so absolutely gracious and helpful with my grandson at a difficult time in his life, and who still, when I meet him anywhere, asks how Anthony's doing. And, Mr. Danzy, that means a great deal even to this day, so thank you for the human being that you are. Last week, I got the opportunity to participate in a dinner gathering honoring Dr. Scheichel. In my comments, I said, I was prepared to say that he's never been a person who likes to draw attention to himself, but he parachuted into the event, so that kind of took that off the table. I also had the opportunity, the good fortune, this evening prior to this meeting, to participate in- in a reception honoring the retirees from our school system from this year. And, boy, what a great group of talent is leaving, and I wish all of them the best, leaving for different reasons, but I wish all of them the best. And then finally, as I had stated that I would do, I officially submitted to Chairperson Lor tonight my letter of intent to step down from the Rockham County School Board effective July 1 in order to spend more time with my family business, as I have some family members and partners whose health is, is failing. So, I, I'll have more to say before I leave at the next meeting, but just to kind of keep an update on where that is, that was officially submitted tonight. So, thank you all again, to all the honorees tonight, well-deserved. I think, I think after I leave the board, I may come back just for the presentations part, because it is so uplifting to see the kids who are, who are recognized, and the teachers who are recognized for doing such wonderful work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lor. I would like to begin to, and by using the same word that Mr. Breeden used, uplifting. This was an uplifting evening. Thank you to Mr. Danzy and Spotswood High School staff for working with the Personnel Department and Katie Lapira to have a very nice dinner for the, for the retirees. Yes, yes, we have a lot of people who have made an impact, a positive impact on our school division, who will no longer be working full-time, and we appreciate every single one of them. We also would like to say, this is, this has been a week of celebration. We had, a week ago, today, the, we had our students honored, and today, in the DNR, we have pictures of all the students who received the Code of Ethics Award from the Harrisonburg Rotary. And of course, I'm going to reiterate Dr. Scheichel's celebration dinner, farm-to-table dinner. Thank you, Ms. Lor, for everything you did, and Mr. Fitzgerald, to make that a smashing success. We appreciate, that was a wonderful tribute evening. Thank you. We thank the MTC folks for the annual breakfast. Many students walked across that stage and received many awards, and for all the students who participate in MTC. Rockingham Educational Foundation had a scholarship reception, reception on Thursday evening, and once again, I would say several million, or maybe at least a million dollars of scholarships were awarded, and it was a wonderful evening for the students and their parents, and we thank those donors who provided those scholarships. And lastly, I would like to make a comment about the update on the superintendent search. At least three times this evening, I have been asked, is tonight the night? That we will announce the superintendent? And the answer is no, tonight is not the night. However, it will be soon, and our goal is to have it announced in May, and if not, I guess we'll announce in June. But we're working on it, we're getting a little bit closer every time we talk. Thank you.
Okay. I'll go next. Save the best for last, right? Yes, it's been crazy, crazy busy this season. I would like to thank Caitlin Gilkerson for all of her hard work on especially Dr. Scheichel's retirement dinner and keeping me sane these past two weeks, so thank you, Caitlin. Yeah, there, there's a lot going on, and if that's not enough, I'm also helping, like I mentioned earlier, prepare kids for Ag Science Fair, and their papers are due Wednesday. So, yes, it's just too much going on right now, but we did, we did find some time to honor Dr. Scheichel, who did parachute into his retirement meeting, or his retirement dinner. And then we turned around the next morning and honored our students from MTC, and then I sat down, and we honored them by a laser light show and smoke machines and walk-up music to ACDC. So now I feel just a little pressure to make a really good announcement, hopefully very soon, about the new superintendent. So, but unfortunately, we don't have that for you tonight, but do keep, keep me in your thoughts and prayers, if so inclined, to, to get these things just right. But we do have a lot going on, and also, what are we, nine days? Nancy knows, nine days till the end of school. So, a lot, a lot, a lot going on right now. And I'll let Dr. Scheichel speak now.
Thank you. Dr. McQuilkin had already mentioned a number of these events. The only other one among that series of evening events was the SHS FFA banquet. That was yet another highlight, celebrating students and teachers and the work that they do every day, and of course, this week, more of that coming up. Wednesday, I believe, is the FCCLA ban, well, FCCLA banquet at Elton Middle School, and then, yes, Thursday, FFA banquet at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School. I also want to thank, you know, the board and, you know, Caitlin and Eric for all the things that they did to make, you know, the retirement event so much fun. It was great, you know, including getting a video from Claire and, and those kinds of things, and to my executive board for gifting me a skydive on that evening. So, I also want to say thank you to Ms. Hamm. Again, those are the things that matter, what we do for all our students, and when students have disabilities, certainly it is our job to make sure that the resources are available, and just for the conversations over the years, I'm very, very grateful, as I am for the conversations with the students. So, the Student Advisory Group Meeting was such a highlight. These students are so knowledgeable, so thoughtful, and, and to work with them on a process to really bring their voice to the table across the county has been a privilege. And so, just one more. Unfortunately, she's no longer here, but earlier, we did an Inspire Award for Sarah Moyers, bus driver, and it's just a great story about her. There was an accident on 81, I-81, that was students from Warren County a while back, I believe in September, and she became aware of it, and so then she drove her school bus to the scene and then took the students back to Warren County High School in the evening, and so this was at, you know, 10 o'clock at night. And so it just shows the level of commitment that our staff have to not only our students, but simply to kids, right, to the, to the whole idea of, of helping all children, whatever their needs may be, and so that, that was another heartwarming story, and, you know, well-deserved Inspire Award, but that's a story that it reminded me of about her, and, and it just really shows what our staff members do for kids. So, just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Hearing that story. Okay. Members, now we will move into our action item portion of our meeting. We will begin with the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the, the May 8 minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the May 8, 2023 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, we'll vote on approving the May 8 minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Next, we have field trips. Dr. Scheichel, can you tell us about?
Board members, you have a number of field trips for your approval. Broadway High School, FFA State Convention, June 20 through the 23rd, 39 students to Virginia Tech in Blacksburg, FFA Officer Retreat, July 11th and 12th, 20 students to Highland Retreat in Berdton, Spotswood High School Theater International Thesbian Competition, June 18 through the 24th, 10 students to Bloomington, Indiana, Turner Ashby High School TSA New Officer Workshop, June 2nd through the 4th, one student to Hampton Inn in Harrisonburg, Virginia, and TSA National Conference, June 27th to July 2nd, 20 students to Louisville, Kentucky, MTC Ag Production, June 20 through the 23rd, 12 to 14 students to Virginia Tech in Blacksburg, and East Rockingham High School Photo Journalism Trip, July 17 through the 20th, four students to JMU in Harrisonburg, and I recommend approval of those trips.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the field trips as presented, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the MTC surplus item.
Yeah, board members, in your materials and also visible to the public, you have the 2023 MTC surplus auction list, the two pages of items that are declared surplus, and so I recommend that the board approve the MTC list of surplus property for auction on June 3, 2023, as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Members, do I have a, a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the MTC list of surplus, surplus property for auction on June the 3rd.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Just to say that this is an excellent place to get giant whiteboards or chairs or tables that have been just pretty hardly used, I mean, like, used hard. But it, it's a fun time, so I do encourage you to come out to the, the auction, which is going to be preceded by a fun run in the morning, which I don't understand how a run can be fun, but okay. And then the Community Day, where people can come in and learn about MTC, and then the auction, and then the ACDC Tribute Band Concert. Is that correct, Dr. Scheichel?
That's correct.
Okay. And they'll also be selling a tiny house, a couple of tiny houses, and some, some projects that the students have completed throughout the year. So I do encourage everyone to come to that. Members, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Broadway High School Electrical Easement. Mr. Reed.
Dr. Scheichel, Chair Lor. In the construction of the addition at Broadway High School, we've come across the need to relocate the main electrical feed to Broadway High School. Dominion Power is asking that we modify our right-of-way agreement with them, which is attached, attached, and I ask for approval for this.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
And I recommend approval of the new electrical easement for Dominion Power at Broadway High School.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the new electrical easement. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, I believe, is also your, Mr. Reed.
So unlike the last easement, where we were granting easement to Dominion Power, this next easement at Linville is where we are asking for easement, that we have negotiated with an adjacent landowner for the discharge of our clean water discharge sewer system that has been designed and approved by the DEQ. So I ask that the board approve our deed of easement there that's attached, so we can move forward with this project.
And I do recommend approval of the deed of easement at Linville Edom Elementary School for the installation of a long-awaited, carefully-planned new sewer system discharge line. Thank you to Mr. Reed for all of the work that he's done on this. It's been a long road.
Three years.
Three years, yes. We were talking about half a year of, of Pump and Hall turning into three, and the work you've done has just been amazing, and there was a commitment from this board to make this happen, and here we are, we're so close, and so again, I recommend approval of the deed of easement at Linville Edom for the installation of the new sewer system discharge line.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Members, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to take a, make a shout out also to the community committee, committee from Linville Edom that, that became involved in this process and engaged the board in, in such a constructive and polite way, asking not only for answers from us, but supplying suggestions for solutions, and it really was a cooperative effort. And I just want to say again, I don't know that any of those folks are here. They became affectionately known as the ladies from Linville Edom, but thank you to the ladies from Linville Edom for your work in this.
Yes, and if you drive in that area, you will still see the Keep Lee's Open Yard signs that were the beginning of that, and, and again, with lots of emotion early on, but amazing meetings, as Mr. Breeden has said, is certainly a highlight.
So, this is it? This gets us there, or?
This will put us to the point of being able to put the project out for bid.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll have the final design. I've got the second final draft I received this afternoon, and I'm reviewing that. Hopefully, by the end of the month, we'll have it out to bid.
Okay, so, in August, we might see you come back with, when do you, when will?
Well, with a bid, yes, yes. Not, not a completed system.
Yeah, yeah. You'll come back to us like in August or so with bids?
In that timeframe, August, September, yes.
Wonderful. I look forward to that. Board members, any further discussion?
Mr. Reed, thank you so much for making this happen and all the work that you put into it. This means a lot to the community, to keep that school up and running and finding a way, it's a term that Coach Davis uses for his baseball team here at Spotswood, but you found a way, and your team around you, to keep that school up and running, and that means a lot to our community here in Rockham County. So, thank you again, as Mr. Scheichel has said, but thanks for all the work you've put into this and your knowledge on this, and so I just, here, here, thank you so much. This is a, this is a big deal.
We thank you for your persistence.
Any further comments? Board members, we will proceed to vote on the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the deed of easement at the Linville Edom Elementary School for installation of a new sewer system discharge line. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Chair Lor, I'll be with you at the end of the meeting for some signatures then.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Painter coming to us about the federal program applications for 2023, 24.
Good evening, Chair Lor, Members of the Board, and Dr. Scheichel. In your pockets, you'll see four federal programs applications for Rockingham County, and then one that is a regional application submitted on our behalf by JMU. They were all written with level funding, and I will amend them this fall once final allocations come out with your approval.
Thank you.
And I recommend to approve the federal program applications for 2023, 2024, Title I Part A, Title II Part A, Title III, Title IV Part A, and the Title I Part C, as submitted by Dr. Painter, Director of Federal Programs.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel and Dr. Painter. Members, do we have a motion?
So, Title III is for EL, and it's above and beyond what the state already recommends. So these are supplemental positions on top of what we, we have to do, so that's what they're for, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the federal program applications for 2023, 2024.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the federal program applications for 2023, 2024, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And as the former principal, Linville Edom, for seven years, thank you.
Next, we will have Ms. Jennifer Williams. You're here to discuss the food and beverage and milk contracts for the year.
Yes, I am. So, good evening, I'm here tonight to present on action items G and H on tonight's agenda, which covers the bids for food and beverage service as well which covers the bids for food and beverage service, as well as bids for fresh produce and milk for school year 23-24 for Rockham County Public Schools. For our main food and beverage service, Rockham, RCPS Food Nutrition Services is a member and the bid holder of the Blue Ridge Group of the Shenandoah School Food Service Buying Co-op, which is currently comprised of Augusta County, Harrisonburg City, Stanton City, and Waynesboro City. Regarding the co-op's food bid for next school year, a bid for the full service of provision of food and paper products was properly specified, advertised, and sent to six firms last month. Three firms responded to the bid: Merchants Grocery Company, Cisco, and U.S. Foods. All co-op members from their respective school divisions are in unanimous agreement that Merchants Grocery Company, the lowest-responsive bidder, be awarded the bid for the projected annual estimated combined total of $7,307,225.80. Regarding the co-op's bid for beverages for next school year, the co-op currently has a contract with Pepsi-Cola of Central Virginia. The current contract includes the option to renew for up to three contract periods, and all co-op members are in agreement to renew this current bid for next school year. So in summary, I recommend that the co-op food bid be awarded to Merchants Grocery, and that the current beverage bid with Pepsi be renewed for the 23-24 school year.
And I do recommend to accept the co-op food and beverage bids for 23-24, as presented by Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Members, do I have a motion?
Move that we accept the recommendations put forth by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote on the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to accept the co-op food and beverage bids for 2023-24. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, how about the milk?
Yes, how about the milk? So this next action item, it's for our fresh produce and milk bids for next year. Regarding our fresh produce bid, an RFP to provide fresh produce to RCPS for next school year was sent to three firms who have the capacity to provide these products to our geographical area. One firm responded, which was Standard Produce out of Charlottesville, who we use currently. The total price of annual purchases for school year 23-24 is projected to be $63,077.50. And regarding our milk bid for next year, I'm recommending to renew our current contract with Pet Dairy out of Mount Crawford for the 23-24 school year, with anticipated purchases to be $320,000. Our current agreement allows the option to renew, and with the current economic climate and continued supply chain issues, I do not expect to receive better service or pricing by going out to bid this year. So in summary, I recommend awarding the RCPS produce bid to Standard Produce and the RCPS milk bid to Pet Dairy. Thank you.
And I, good, and I do recommend approval of those bids as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Members, do I have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation regarding the produce and the milk bids.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Yes. Yes. Yes, correct. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote on the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to accept the co-op. I'm on the wrong one, sorry. The superintendent's recommendation to accept the bid for milk and produce. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on that. That concludes our action items for the evening. We will now move on to information items with superintendent update.
Board members, I have two quick updates for you. As previously requested, I will update you on some of the elements that the board would have to consider if you were to implement a dual-language immersion program. Mr. Cross had requested that update, and then also, you know, as you heard tonight, you know, Broadway High School expansion. You had that easement there, and so we're about a year away from the capacity at Broadway High School being increased. And so some redistricting, you know, the dreaded R-word comes with that. And the expansion of Broadway High School allows for an additional 250 students at the high school. It's then well-aligned in terms of capacity per grade level when you look from the elementary schools to the middle school and to the high school. And so this is not something that the board will decide in the next few weeks. Then, you know, we need to make sure that in the fall, updated counts are available in terms of the number of students per grade level in each of the affected schools. The board will also need to consider whether there's simply a desire to alleviate some of the growth pressure at Spotswood and Mountain View in that attendance area by moving some students, you know, especially along Route 11 North that we've previously talked about a number of times, into the Broadway attendance area, or whether to also then take additional steps, for example, to move some students into some of our smaller schools, Audubon Elementary School, Folchran Elementary School, Linville Edom Elementary School, where you, in some cases, have a significant discrepancy between class sizes in some of those schools and then the larger schools. And you could alleviate some of the class-size pressures on the larger schools by simply, again, you know, moving some students to these smaller schools without actually having a significant impact in terms of staffing. It would actually help have a little bit more balance across all the elementary schools. So this will be a discussion likely for the board over the summer and then into the fall. But a decision about this will likely then have to be made in the fall, so that scheduling, registration, all those items for the 24-25 school year can be started, you know, in January 2024. So this is a task for the board for this upcoming summer, if there's a retreat, and then, again, the fall discussion. We, Cabrun to Lacy Spring, you'll see the maps here in a second. That would be the only area that actually involves a change in the high school attendance area. There are a number of other potential changes in terms of redistricting in there, but that's the only one, really, again, moving some students out of the Spotswood attendance area that are currently in the Cabrun elementary area, and then, of course, at Mountain View and Spotswood, moving those into the Broadway attendance area. That's the high school, middle school change, and that's oftentimes the more difficult one. But there are some other options as well, again, in terms of creating some balance. These lines are just a starting point. I will give you some of the numbers that are involved, just so you see what the impact could be. They were drawn by, after a request by the Transportation Department. So my first request was simply, provide some lines that would be useful for transportation in terms of where the routes would be, and also have the number of students involved that would really help, you know, balance things out. Not all of these are going to happen likely. Not all of them are going to happen exactly this way, but it's a good starting point for the school board to consider. So, when we look at school capacity, again, Elkton Middle School, we've talked about this a number of times. It's now down to about 12 students over capacity. That's, there's no significant growth in that area, so there's, all the other schools have some excess capacity. But when you look at Broadway High School, there's certainly some room, but there's significantly more room at the middle school and then also at the elementary schools. If you look at Cabrun, even though there's still an additional capacity of 66, when you have 734 students at an elementary school, really, the school may have that capacity, but you're talking about one gym, you're talking about one cafeteria, and that's just getting enormous. And so certainly, there's some pressure there. You look at Peak View, 53, you know, and those numbers keep going down drastically at Peak View and at Cabrun. So there's certainly that desire to alleviate some of that pressure. And again, with the Broadway expansion, so a year from now, that opportunity will be there. Now, it's not possible to simply say, well, let's move Route 11 North to Lacy Spring, you know, the Cabrun students to Lacy Spring, because Lacy Spring doesn't have enough room for that. So there's an excess capacity of 154 at Lacy Spring. And currently, if Route 11 North is redistricted, the way transportation drew up the early suggestion, you have 172 students. So that would then overcrowd Lacy Spring. However, there's some areas in the Lacy Spring attendance area that could move to Linville Edom and to Plains. That in itself would be about 64 students right there that are then coming out of that number. So, again, there's our ripple effect. Of course, if that's not the desire, and it should be kept very simple, and Cabrun to Lacy is all you do, well, you just change that line. It's a question of whether you stay on both sides of the interstate, you know, in that Route 11 North area, how far, you know, whether you keep some of these, or, again, or whether you find some other ways to relieve pressure at Lacy, because you don't want to overcrowd that school either, but there's room. And with what you're going to see on the map, there's certainly some ways, again, to move students. Also, when we talk about Folchran, so Folchran Elementary School right now has 141 students. So that's a really small school. And so sometimes you get really extreme examples of class sizes where you may have 12 and 12 students, because you're not going to have 24 in a class. So, and it's not just Folchran, and again, you see the same at Audubon in cases where you have 12 students in a class, whereas at Cabrun, which is a big school, and you have, you know, five classes in each grade level, they're always going to be hitting closer to that maximum class size. So some of these movements of moving students to some of the other elementary schools, again, helps balance that out across the county. So if you then end up with, you know, maybe 18 or 20 in each class at Folchran, well, if those are coming out of Linville, out of John C. Myers and Plains, that drops the average class size at those two schools, so that they'll be more similar in that area. And you don't really have to add staff, right? So you can actually reduce class size across the board. Yes, it's an increase at Folchran, but there, they're so small that that's likely justified. So the two proposals in there, 31 and 28, from Plains and John C. Myers to Folchran. And then also, at Audubon, you have room for 116 students. So there are two proposals in there, again, just as starting points, because, again, those numbers will change, and those would be from John Whalen and from Mountain View, so 24 and 81. And again, those lines can be drawn differently, and we're just one of the two, or none of it, right? But these are good discussion points. There's also one proposal that is, when you take 172 students out of Cabrun, and you really only have very limited space left at Peak View, a consideration of moving some students from Peak View to Cabrun, so they both have about the same excess capacity for the next few years, because it seems like Peak View is adding just as many students as Cabrun. Again, we're in the urban development area. And so I'll show, again, here are the areas that would be, that are in this mix. So what you see, here are the elementary attendance areas. Do you have, you know, Folchran all the way in northwest, and then you have Plains there in black. You have John C. Myers in red. You have Linville Edom in green. Lacy Spring is that light blue. You have Cabrun in yellow. That purple is Peak View. And then on the other side of the city, you have Mountain View, that kind of fuchsia color, and then the gray is Audubon. And the ones that are in that royal blue, or blazer blue, since we're here at Spotswood, those are the areas that actually could move. So when you look at, for example, from Mountain View to Audubon, it's an enormous area, but only has 81 students. To compare that, you look at the Peak View to Cabrun area, 95 students, and you can't even see it on the map because it's so small, because it's one neighborhood. So sometimes it's large areas, but with few students. And so that area from Mountain View to Audubon is outlined in red, and again, it's in this blazer blue. Below that, you see the John Whalen to Audubon, outlined in that lime green, and again, in the blue color. So those are the ones that could go to Audubon. If you look up at Folchran, also at the top of the map, again, you have two areas that could come out of Plains and John C. Myers. And then you have Lacy to Plains, and Lacy to Linville Edom in the middle, and then Route 11 North. So here's what that looks like in a little bit more detail. So Route 11 North, it really is from the city limits up to where you already have Lacy Spring attendance area, both sides of the interstate, and again, that would move 172 elementary students. And so that's a, it's not a big area in terms of square miles, but certainly a significant number of students. It would also involve, then, of course, middle school and high school students that live there, because, again, this is the only area that would actually change high school attendance areas. And then the one I mentioned earlier, the one that's too small to see, you can see it here, Peak View to Cabrun. So that's 95 students, and that's Lakewood, right? So based on transportation needs and what makes the most sense. I know, you know, some of the other areas there, you have Taylor Springs, you have some of the other areas there that already go to Cabrun. Lakewood still goes to Peak View, and so that would be, the distance in travel is insignificant from Peak View to Cabrun, you know, that's two minutes. So that would be one possibility. Again, that's simply transportation set. It makes the most sense from their perspective. Certainly, there are other areas there as well, but that one has a significant number of kids and could be moved. Again, it's a starting point for conversation. Preston Lakes, for example, is already at Cabrun. So here are the ones, you know, again, Peak View to Cabrun, we already talked about that, sorry. This would be Lacy to Linville is what we're talking about here. Lacy to Linville, 37, so that's that one in the middle, and then Lacy to Plains at the very top, that kind of square part, that would be 27 students. And then, again, you see the Route 11 North part, that's what would come into Lacy Spring. Then you have, again, these areas at the north end, so John C. Myers to Folchran. Now, that's the bottom one of those two blue ones, and then John C. Myers, and then Plains to Folchran, 28 students. So basically, you really shift, right now, the line for Folchran's there in the gap, you move it over by one road, really. And it's, it would not be a significant difference in travel time for those students, whether they go to Plains, John C., or out to Folchran. But, again, that could add some students to Folchran, which really is a very small school. And here, again, we have John Whalen and Mountain View to Audubon. So these are in the transportation system, and we created a separate copy of the database to be able to simulate this, so we can change these lines anytime. You could really, basically, grab a line, move it over by a road, and then it will give you new numbers. So this is one of the nice features of our transportation system, VersaTrans. I know it's changing to a more web-based version, but should have the same functionality. You can simulate small changes, you know, you could chop it up into different components and say, well, how many on this part of that, right? So just, again, as a starting point for the board to consider, but these would all be, again, these would all be possible and are for further board consideration. But just as a reminder, again, redistricting decisions should be made this fall so that there's enough time then come January 2024, you know, to schedule students, right, and to know where students register, and to look at staffing, so, but for your consideration. So, yeah, any questions on this? Yeah, so right now, if you look at that, so right now, if you look at, well, I don't know if I have, no, there's a, this pointer here, it's, so you have the interstate here. You have, I think, here is the exit 251, Interstate Exit 251, and then goes a little bit further up. So these students right now, they travel all the way to Cabrun. And in fact, it's one of the few times in my tenure where I've gotten multiple requests from families who said, why are we traveling to Cabrun when Lacy is just up the road, right? Because Lacy is much closer for these students than Cabrun is. And so right now, it's, again, city limits. And so right now, it's again, city limits, let's see here, city limits, you know, at the bottom here, and then you have Cabrun in yellow there and, and Lacy is kind of that light blue. And so it would add that chunk from the city limits up Route eleven north to where Lacy already is, the, the Lacy attendance area, that would get added to Lacy Spring. So there's some developments in there that, you know, came up over the last decade. Yeah, and so it's a significant number of, of students in that area. It's just a little bit past the exit two fifty-one. Yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah. And that's actually where the requests came from, from a number of parents, which again, when you change high school attendance areas. Now, this part of the county used to be part of Broadway. So that was redistricted into Cabrun and Spotswood when East Rock opened and, you know, a lot of students moved to East Rock. And so basically, you know, Spotswood didn't have enough students for the most part and again, Broadway was filling up quickly at that time. And so this is a change back. Now, there are no students in the system who at one point were in the Broadway attendance area, got redistricted and now go back. That's, it was before that. All those students have been through the system, but again, that's traditionally been in the northern attendance area and it would go back to that.
How many roughly estimate, how many are in the account of how many were in the trailer park?
I don't know the number of the students in, in that specific, in that specific trailer park, but I can certainly run that number for you. Again, we can, we can do it by address, but it's almost easier in the transportation system where you can draw a little outline around that and then just run the numbers for who is in that boundary, so.
So that, that mostly attack second kids there?
Absolutely.
The last time you brought them to Spotswood, now we're taking them back to Spotswood. So I'd definitely like to know that number there, possibly how we could just board shift that line if needed, if you're talking to the community of what they would like to do as well. So give them a quick one there.
Sure. And again, that's why, you know, I'm bringing these possible solutions now, right? Again, with the way the numbers are in the Spotswood attendance area, I mean, Cabrun and Peak View are going to fill up. So this is one of the big safety valves, you know, using TA attendance area as a safety valve is a little trickier because there's a lot more development in the TA attendance area. It's well balanced and with Broadway High School expansion, you simply do have room, right? So it's one of the simplest ones. And again, you know, in this case, there wouldn't be a single student who previously attended the Broadway attendance area and now is coming back. It's not been a back and forth within, you know, that community, but certainly people have lived there or have kids that are, you know, fifteen years apart, then certainly that could happen.
I agree.
Any other questions? Okay. And then the second one, again, this is just a very brief summary of the conversations around dual language immersion program. So just to highlight, again, Mr. Cross had asked just for an update and also, you know, we've talked about this, there are certainly tremendous advantages of having a dual language immersion program. So one, students are immersed in a foreign language at a young age, right? It's different from taking a foreign language class. You speak the language in the subject area that you're studying and it is like being in another country, learning the language from a native speaker because the teacher would be a native speaker. And there's also an enormous benefit to students who are actually native speakers in most scenarios here, it would be English and Spanish dual language immersion. And it would be a huge benefit to native speakers of Spanish because, you know, students who come here and that's their primary language and they're still learning English, all of a sudden, they're the experts in the classroom. And in fact, many students actually, you know, may do very well in math. It's the terminology that trips them up sometimes and now it's in their native language and they can help others and it really elevates the status of the, the native speakers in the class. And again, I talked to the Winchester superintendent, Jason Van Heukelum, and he said that's one of the biggest benefits they've seen, right? But there are also some considerations that simply have to be taken seriously. So staffing, how do you staff this? You know, what's the interest level? Is it fair, you know, across the county? And are, could there be an impact on accreditation or mostly on, you know, test scores, you know, is ultimately what you do have to think about? Not that, that's what should prevent it, but at least be aware of it. So when we talk about staffing, now this is one of the more interesting approaches. Winchester City, they participate, they, they work with an organization called Participate Learning. And what this organization can ensure is that you do have staff that is licensed in Virginia but are native speakers of Spanish. And they do a lot of work with that organization and those teachers can only come here for three years. So it's three years at a time. One of the hardest parts is after three years, Winchester says goodbye to them, they cannot keep them any longer because they come on a cultural ambassador visa and so they can stay for three years. After three years, they have to return. And in fact, you know, some school districts may then entertain that the option of applying for a different visa for them can't do that. It would ruin the relationship with that organization, but they've had really good success with, again, every group of three-year teachers that come. And again, they are licensed to teach in Virginia. That was one of my questions, you know, how do you deal with the fact that you've got to have a licensed teacher in the classroom? There's a cost associated with that, of course, and, but there are some savings. For example, you know, when you have these teachers come from other countries, they do pay taxes, right? There's sometimes this misconception, you know, when you move here, you don't pay taxes. But because they have to go back after three years, there are some taxes, social security tax, for example, that they won't pay because they'll never be eligible for social security or some of the other programs. But they do pay income tax, right? And so there's some savings in terms of FICA, but you do pay a cost. Winchester feels like that's somewhat of a wash. It's, it's not a significant expense. So from the staffing side, because that's normally a big concern, right? Because once you started, you can't just say, oh, we did it in kindergarten and first grade, well, now we can't find someone for second grade, well, we'll just blow it up again, right? You don't want to do that. So staffing, not the biggest issue, right? The, what you really have to think about is the interest level, right? So, and again, this is why, what I would say is if the board wants to consider this, there needs to be a detailed feasibility study that takes at least a year, maybe two. I talked to Dr. Carol Clark about this, you know, her recommendation was take two years before you actually started to do a feasibility study to look at whether you can really pull this off because there are some difficulties, you know, with this. And there's a reason why it's more likely to happen in a city environment like Harrisonburg and Winchester than it is in the third largest county in Virginia, and I'll talk about that. So.
A typical setup of a dual language immersion program, you need at least two classes that are dedicated to that in each grade level because one class would be taught in Spanish in the morning and then in English in the afternoon. And the other class is flipped. So one class is taught in English in the morning and Spanish in the afternoon because you can't teach every subject in Spanish, right? You can't teach English in Spanish. So, you know, you have to consider what you're going to teach. It could be math, it could be science, social studies are typically the options where the students might be taught in Spanish by that teacher who's indoors to teach a science or social studies, let's say, in Spanish. Now, you also have to consider that some families will not want their child in a dual language immersion program. So you have to have at least three classes, right? One's the morning Spanish class, one's afternoon Spanish class, and one's the, all the English class. And if you're in a school where you really only have three classes per grade level, then the numbers have to really pan out well. Now, it's not a problem if you have too much interest. Because if you have too much interest, you just have a lottery and only so many kids can get into the dual immersion program. It's what Harrisonburg does, it's what Winchester does. There's also, there has to be a significant enough population of native Spanish speakers because typically the attempt is to have half of the kids in each class in that dual immersion program actually be the native speakers, right? So you have to have at least enough interest to fill the two, the three classes because if you don't and you only have enough interest for one class, now you're stuck. Because then you might have, you know, twelve kids in one class that's the morning Spanish, twelve in the one that's afternoon Spanish, but now you need a fourth teacher. So then now you're talking about additional staff necessary because you can't just put forty kids in the, in that third class, right? So feasibility study would help with the interest level. All right. That's not advancing, can you let's say?
The computer is frozen. The computer is frozen.
Okay. Yeah, and that's okay. So I talked about interest. I also talked about fairness. So one of the considerations then is, and this is why it's easy in a city, right? So what happens if you do this in, let's say, two schools? We've had schools that have expressed interest. So let's say you put one dual immersion program at Mountain View and one at Lacy Spring. And let's say we also put one at Cabrun. So we have three schools, okay? So you can staff it. At Cabrun, certainly you would have enough interest, you know, for, you know, having two, the two classes and then enough other classes for, that are taught all in English. But what happens when they get to middle school? Because most dual immersion programs, they run all the way through high school. And so if you only have it in three schools, now all of a sudden, Mountain View, you're going to have a dual immersion program and only the kids that happen to be at Cabrun can be in that program because the kid's at Peak View. Or if you're at Lacy Spring, you know, kids from Linville, Plains, John C. Myers, Folks Run, they've never had a chance to be in that program. So now you have a very selective group in middle school and high school that can do that dual immersion program. That's a challenge. The way city schools can address that, and both Winchester and Harrisonburg do that, they say, well, so let's say you had a school where we don't have enough for the dual immersion program. You can take your child in the morning to the school that has one. And so every family has a chance to do this, right? You're part of the lottery and so on. So because in Harrisonburg City, you know, from every school, if you had, if you had a program only located at one or two places, well, you're not more than ten minutes away from that school. Well, if your program is at Lacy Spring, what's the opportunity for a kid at Folks Run? If you have it at another school, you know, Mountain View, what's the opportunity for a child from Audubon or from South River, right? So that's a really serious issue then because now you're creating a program that's not available to all students. And so that kind of selectiveness, that's something to consider. And if it's not available to all students, right, are, do you then have the resources to do it at every school? Well, you can't. You know, the classes at Folks Run, Audubon, where there's only one in the grade level. You can't tell the kids they have to do it, even with two, again, like I said, you can't do it. So you really have to think through that, you know? It's such a wonderful idea, but that's again, why you see more often in cities than you see it in rural communities because you can allow people to travel, right? And so, and then the other concern, the last one that I talked about, accreditation, you have to consider whether there can be an impact and that would be something to research from, with other school divisions. What happens when you teach science in Spanish? What happens if you teach math in Spanish? And then the test that's used to accredit your school is given in English, right? Because there's terminology that's not going to be the same. Will you see an impact there? And are we comfortable allowing that impact, right? It doesn't mean, I mean, we can say, sure, it's way more important that the students have this opportunity, right, than what, you know, a few test scores that aren't going to work, right? So that's another consideration, right? So for accountability, are we going to be okay with students learning a subject in Spanish and then having to show their knowledge in English? So those are the things, I think, to consider. And again, you know, you need sufficient numbers that lottery systems often use. If the numbers are higher, that's the ideal case. And then, yeah, you just have to, you know, think through what that would do when you can only offer it in a couple of schools. It's not impossible, right? But certainly, it's not all, on the positive side, it's not all, you know, oh, this can't be done, it can't be staffed without certain organizations. And so that's a conversation again, that you may want, if the board is interested, do a detailed feasibility study, what's the interest level at what schools? Can this be done while ensuring fairness for, for the students that don't happen to live in a, in an area where this is available? Because even if you let the families drive, right, you're limiting it to families that can't, that have the time to drive their child. You're not going to run a bus from Folks Run to Lacy Spring and lose an hour of instructional time every day because students are traveling to inform the dual immersion program. Right? Lots of things to think about. Again, the idea of a dual immersion program is phenomenal. I would love for my kids to have that opportunity, but it's difficult to implement, especially in a large rural area. So that's, hopefully that answers some of the questions you had and provides that information that you may need to talk about this. Any questions on that?
Thank you. We will now move into school board questions. I'm going to again, start with Mr. Cross.
Got a few things. One thing I want to address is that one of the parents came again tonight, just talking about, not just talking about, but talked about the appropriateness of books or in the library. It's still something that we have as a board discussed, as a board. And it would be nice to, to look at these concerns and to begin to talk about them and see what we've come up with because if we don't talk about it, it just stays the same. And I think that there, there is reasonableness to, to see that there are things in the library that are not appropriate for certain age groups. So we need to come up with a plan to address these situations. It would be nice to talk as a school board on these concerning issues that parents have inside our community. So it would be nice for us to meet and talk about that. One question I have, mine with Dr. Scheichel is, can you address, are we still doing the forty percent grade for students who don't turn in any work and the teachers still are having to give them forty percent if they don't do their homework?
No, so, well, I mean, it's a variation of it. So when we went through remote learning, you know, virtual learning, there was a significant impact on grades simply based on students not turning work in on time. So a zero can hurt tremendously because the gap, you know, from a zero to, to a passing grade is like sixty percent, right? And so there's an enormous impact. And what really students were graded on for the most part at that point was basically being on time rather than the knowledge that they gained. And so principals had conversations, principals suggested that we set a forty percent floor so that the gap basically is twenty percent, so you have a twenty percent gap to a passing grade and then the gaps are ten percent, you know, because they're from sixty, seventy, seventy to eighty and so on. That, of course, just like any system, students gained it in a way that they said, well, so these assignments here, now they're not going to matter, so I'm just not going to do the work at all, I'm going to get the forty and then I'll just do well at these assignments and I'll find passing. And so teachers asked that we go away from that. And so again, we talk to principals, in principals meetings, they talk to their faculty, so all the faculties there, you know, had conversations with administrators. And rather than saying, you know, you can gain this on an individual assignment level where you really just don't do that work at all, there is a floor on the term grade. And so if you, teachers are allowed to give zeros on assignments, and they do, but if you look at, let's say, the first quarter grade, there's a floor of forty. Now, in order to get a passing grade, now you've got to get an eighty in that second term. And you can't get an eighty if you don't do the work, right? And so it's, it's, it's kind of a compromised approach there. The, what changes to the grading policy may be made is again, a conversation for the school board and I think it's one of the topics potentially for summer retreats to really talk about that. Our elementary schools, you know, there, there's been a strong movement towards grades that are more descriptive rather than just a letter grade. And that's been well perceived by parents and by teachers at the middle and high school level where you, where you have these issues. There simply has to be a conversation on what is a grade supposed to show, right? It certainly shows many things, whether you understand the material, but also whether it's on time. How much of it should be the fact that it's on time and so do you not allow any? And so do you not allow any late work? How realistic is that in the world of work? You look at any environment, people turn in work late all the time, now you don't want to do that. If, you know, SpaceX is sending a rocket to the National Space Station, you can't just say, hey, that, the fuel's going to be a couple hours late, right? You can't do that. But there are certainly many environments where work is done late. So it's an interesting conversation on what grades are supposed to show, because they do show a number of different things. And so, again, there was a change from allowing zeros for individual assignments, but having a floor for the term. So that's what we are for the current year, and then for next year, that's all a consideration.
Is that, is that something that's across the board, every school, or?
Yes, middle and high schools. Now, it's interesting, right, so Rakim County, it's an administrative approach. So Rakim County policy doesn't really specify, teachers can do all kinds of things within the policy. So for example, a teacher could weigh, if you have a year-long class, they could say, first semester counts for ten percent, second semester counts for ninety percent, perfectly within policy, right? So a lot of these conversations around grading, they do happen with teachers at the administrative level, and so there are some things that, you know, principals, you know, work through with teachers, and, and so that, that was done. There's no requirement of any sort of that. The only requirement in the policy is that if you give an exam, it counts forty percent of the grade. That's all there is. There's nothing about averaging grades out, you can do a number of different things, and so that was handled with the administration there.
Real quickly, what was done before COVID?
Upgeach teacher, right? So if a teacher had a forty percent floor, certainly permitted by policy. A zero was never mandatory, but there's some really good information that, you know, that Shiflett worked with, principals a lot on this, and, and he has the better information on this huge impact that a single zero can have on a grade. So again, he gets a legitimate conversation to be had in the future, and what do we want to see grades really show? Because there are so many different good conversations. For example, a student comes in, does really well first semester, because they had some of that material in the school that they transferred from, right, but they don't do anything all year. They coast through the first semester, get an eighty, right, and in the second semester, they don't do anything. That student got the same grade as a kid who is struggling, struggling, struggling first semester, gets better and better and better, has the same average as another student, who, you know, what's the grade represent? Like, this student learned eight times during the school year, he doesn't do anything, which just goes into a cost state of improvement. So these aren't, they aren't simple answers, and I think there are a lot of good conversations to be had around that, right? And so I think that's a, a good conversation to have. And the forty percent floor, it's kind of a, a quick, simple approach to say, let's not let a zero where someone typically didn't turn in the work on time, or the teacher didn't take late work, if not have that ruin an entire semester. So it's a, it's a very simplistic approach. It can be done much more nuanced, you know, with all kinds of approaches like standard space grade, but it's a long conversation to be had, and I think it's a worthwhile one.
Mr. Breeden?
I'm going to bed.
Dr. McLeod?
Yes.
I just have one question. Do we have any students left with us tonight? You can just raise your hand. I hear that some of the, the town meetings have you get up and give a complete dissertation, but at the school board meeting, we just want to say hi. So if we have any students, if you could just raise your hand, so we can say hi to you? No students? Okay, there you go. I could, thank you and welcome tonight. Let's, let's give our students a round of applause for hanging on. Dr. Scheichl, do you have a question? Okay. Members, that we have reason to enter closed meeting, don't have a motion?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-one. Personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees, including the division superintendent for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation, and A-two, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on entering closed meeting, but before we do that, I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Enjoy your last few days of school and enjoy summer if we don't see you before the end of summer. And thank you all for coming. Safe travels home. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same side. Thank you, we are in closed session.